Do you want the earpiece, Steven?
Please, yes.
Do you really want it?
No, yes.
Okay.
I didn't give them both ears. I had it in stereo, but now I'm good.
And Emerson was really upset. He's a huge gun expert. When he did two laps to go, he just, uh. They love their racing. He was so, it's really hot out there. It almost like seven degrees. Ninety-three. She said, "I'm not a fan of B this year."
No, I saw the tour. I'll cart like. It's one of your cars.
The track is actually in Canada.
It's, that's where it's going. That means to be in your dures. What's the performance? Yeah. If I asked for a same look, it's man, there's no doctor. I described as a question.
That's a big.
No. Okay. So then last Saturday, there was. Emerson was going to come. Well, I see. So.
Wow.
Well, tell me. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, meeting of the Martinsville Board of Works and Safety. Meeting is hereby called to order. Mr. Merda, would you please call roll?
Mayor Costin.
Present.
John Lillywhite. Kelly Bray.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, you received a copy of the Monday, June ninth, meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections in minutes?
No corrections. I'll make a motion when we accept the minutes as written.
I will second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. First item on tonight is a lease agreement, fifty-six North Main Street. Mr. Merda?
Yes, before you tonight board, for your consideration, is a lease agreement for property at fifty-six North Main Street. This is a property that came up for, that is available. This size will feed the needs of our office. The amount that we'd be paying is thirty-five hundred dollars a month. The bond, as you'll, as everyone knows, the bond that we were considering as far as a municipal building was going to run at least six million dollars, which would equate to about forty-five thousand dollars a month. So this is obviously much cheaper and still gets us to the goal. We've received our official eviction notice from the wastewater treatment plant. They would like to get us out of there. We've been there a little over three years now, so looking for your approval on this tonight.
I would entertain a motion on the lease agreement.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this permanent residence?
It is a annual lease, so if we do move forward with a permanent building structure here, whether it's adding or remodeling or whatever, we could, at that point, move on. So it doesn't lock us in anything, but it does get us out of the wastewater treatment plant. Also gets us in a facility for now that fits, fits our needs, so. So it could be long-term. It would work long-term. It can also be short-term.
Thank you. I'll make a motion when we enter the lease agreement.
I will second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Good luck moving. Uh, consideration expenditures of the two thousand twenty-one redevelopment commission bond. Mr. Merda, you want to?
Yes, so in an effort to avoid taking a bond for the future civic center that will be named July fourth, I believe, we looked at the financials for the RDC and they had the cash available to purchase the building and take on some of the expenses. Part of that would be using some of the bond money that's in the RDC two thousand twenty-one bond, which is under the authority of the Board of Works. So there's roughly one point five million dollars available there. So looking for your approval tonight to use some of those monies for the purchase of the civic center building and some of the soft costs.
Will it cover the total amount?
It will. That and the cash that they, that the RDC has, we'll be combining that. We'll be using the cash the RDC has first and then going to this bond.
And so then we'll own the civic theater.
Correct. Right. Which will save the city about one point seven million dollars doing this.
This way, yes.
So I would entertain a motion regarding the expenditure of the two thousand twenty-one redevelopment commission bond funds.
I'll make a motion that we use the RDC funds.
Motion made. I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Third item on the agenda is the consideration of an agreement for services with Proactive MD. Mr. Merda, you're up to bat again.
You all are stuck with me for a lot tonight. So looking to make a move, right now we are under agreement with Marathon Health. That is a collaborative agreement with the county and with the school system. Just varying issues, the county and the city partner together on bidding out this service. And Proactive MD came back with what we thought was the best value going forward. So looking for your approval tonight to move forward this agreement. It is thirty thousand dollars more a year for the city, just so everybody's aware. But we get additional services. So now we don't get pre-employment screenings, workers' comp, injuries, those types of things. So we can run those through there. So it'll actually save us about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year by making this move. But just want to be transparent that the initial upfront cost is thirty thousand dollars more.
Any questions?
Yes. And we have that in our budget?
Yes. Yeah, it does fit within our budget because we're actually saving money by making this move, so.
Does the county make in the same move?
They are.
The, the school system is not.
Currently.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we enter the agreement with Proactive MD.
I will second that motion. All in favor of the motion to approve the agreement with Proactive MD say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Mr. Merda, you're up again.
This one doesn't have anything to do with money, so we need to establish a, a city court clerk full-time position that has not existed with the city of Martinsville historically. We also, while we were doing that, went through and cleaned up the job description for the city court clerk part-time position. That did exist before, but it was pretty outdated, so we went ahead and updated that with the same language. So just looking for your approval to get those established tonight. That way we have those on the books.
Are those positions filled?
The part-time court clerk position is currently filled. The full-time court clerk position is not filled, and we can't really fill it until we at least establish the position. The next step to that, to fill it, would be with, the salary ordinance will have to be amended and approved by the city council. But they can't even consider it until that position's created.
Alright.
So we need to do these individually?
I would request that you do them individually, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we create the city clerk, city court clerk full-time position.
I will second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the changes to the part-time position description for the city court clerk.
I will second that motion also. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda tonight is considering restricting the alley beside the civic theater to pedestrians only. With the opening of civic theaters, believed that it would be prudent to restrict the alley beside the theater to pedestrians only. To this would be accomplished by placing ballards or concrete flower pots on each end to prevent vehicles from driving down the alley. Once the construction's done, the lights will be put back up. And if you have been down in the alley, if you pull off Morgan Street, go to the back, you're not going to be able to pull out on the alley. It's just, it's too tight to go east or west there. So with all of the activity that's going to occur there, we thought it would just be better to restrict that to pedestrians only.
I guess I assume that's what it was going to be, because if I remember the layout, wasn't a restroom entrance, like, real close? Like, I assumed pedestrians would be using that if they?
There, initially, when we looked at this four, four and a half years ago, we were going to buy the smoothie shop, turn that into a welcome center, and have restrooms available for the concerts. Now with the, the way this has progressed into the theater, then we're not going to be opening those restrooms up. There will be emergency exits off, onto the alley, but the restrooms are going to be reserved for the theater only.
Okay.
But you're right, that was what the initial thought was going to be. There's a, there's a drain there in the middle of the alley, Gary. That was kind of elaborate to set up and, but you're right, it's been the intention all along was make that pedestrian only.
Okay. But the alley that goes east and west behind it?
That'll still stay open.
Is, is it open all the way across? It is, right?
Yes.
That block?
We have four ballers that tend to put there. There is a step that comes out near the north end of that alley. The stages. You can put a baller either side of that, put a baller at each end. Then there's catenary lighting that's like, back and forth to there as well, so it'll be pedestrian only.
But, but the east-west alley will, will remain open.
Okay. Yeah. I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we make the alley, restrict the alley beside the civic theater to pedestrians only.
I will second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Steer adjustments tonight, we just have three. Seven forty, East Warren Street, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Sixteen fifty, Michigan Street, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And six ninety, Duo Drive, seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Any questions or comments regarding these three?
No. I'll make a motion when we accept the steer adjustments.
I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Next regular meeting of the Board of Works and City will be on Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Six thirty here in the council chambers. No other business. We are adjourned.
If that's straight. So he was really.
Well, it's a stretch. That's not really. They're both very, very. One is really pretty well shot. I'd love to get. Thanks for the guy.
It's good.
With the voter.
Yes, Mary. I like. Joe, I was just. Certified making part. We're doing. Is I am part of an asset management. So you could address the care. Or that probably.
I don't think.
That's what the ordinance is.
So does that does that cut the cost?
They don't make a certified. Give them your secret request if any more.
Same with small.
Quick.
Nine hundred and sixty cents.
Who will they provide?
I have.
They can talk.
About the story.
I'm happy. So nicely. I consider. Glossary. So what's it? That's sort of my.
My direction. I would like to. No doubt.
Yeah. That's sort of like a mail. Or three dollars.
Yeah. It's. We were sure. That. That's.
Good.
There's the. So you did.
See.
Right second. Turned over there. All right. I want to. For a technical. You know, there's. For. For. You want to set the. For. That's the end of that. How long should the full bridge? That's our head. It's not really. That box was. Start. I just. It's an old. Month. I think that's. So I see that. Okay. I'm. Eight. All again. Red. Isn't it? That's. I said. I.
Yeah, it was. It was three hundred and eighty.
You know, why it used to be. We sell copies. Chargers on us. And we'll.
Oh, I'm going to go. You should watch out.
Watch the day. That's. Well. I'm.
It goes. Um. Right. You know.
That's. You want to. Remember. A lot of. Yeah. You. I would. Realize. That Eric. Kevin. And Lee. Also. And John. Was bad.
You just want to do like. You don't. Do that.
You. I have. I. My. So. That's. You have. You have. See. The professor. Two. I was. Yes. Yeah. Listen. I'm. I'm. True. I think. Say. Again. I was. So. We. Don't. Do. That. Yeah. Yeah.
What'd you think of those B ones? What'd you think of those B ones?
Yeah. That's.
Yeah.
We're. Every week. We are. We're. Yeah.
They had a bunch of trucks.
I suggest you. Just give.
So. Like they're trying to get something. I can't imagine. All these. Well. They might be. Take. Some. Sorry.
I'm. Saying. It's a game. So.
Yeah. It's funny too. Doesn't. He draws.
You feel it? Hello. You. Okay. I hear. Where. Actually, even I think she. Does. I'm. Trying. I would actually. I think. You. Have. You. Have. I think. And. So. And. You. I was. China. We find. We. Because. Eventually. I think. They're. Trying to. Talk. Going, okay. Put our hands off of that. You're saying. You. So. So.
And. He. Straight. Service. Both.
It's. Any. Any. Oh. Then. I think. Yeah. Because.
Yes. They're right now. It's. So. And then it's. Sixty nine. Seventy bucks. And. Seventy four. So. About. Five. Hundred. Forty. Oh.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June twenty third, two thousand twenty five. Meeting of the Marshall Common Council. Meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Warner Swopes from the Zion Sil Baptist Church to come forward this evening, open us in prayer, and if you remain standing for our pleasure allegiance.
Thank you. Almighty God, we just come to you today in awe of your presence and thankful that you're here with us. God, we pray for our nation today. We pray for all of those men and women serving our country that are in harm's way today, that you'll just protect them, that you'll put a hedge of protection around them. We pray for this meeting tonight, that if there be any spirit of disunity, that it be broken in Jesus' name today, that we can come together for the good of this community and focus on the needs of those who are vulnerable and without a voice. I pray for the men and women of this council, that they'll be guided by your spirit to do what is honorable to this, for this city, and ultimately to glorify you with every decision. And we pray these things in the mighty name of King Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior. Would the clerk please call roll?
John Badger.
Present.
Susie Lips. Ben Mayhem.
Present.
Josh Barron.
Present.
Ann Miller. Phil Deckard Senior.
Present.
Phil Deckard Second. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, you each received minutes from the Monday, June ninth meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move the minutes be accepted and approved?
Second. But a motion made second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. On the first thing on the agenda tonight, we're going to ask for the council reports from the council that are serving on other commissions. Councilman Deckard, we're going to ask you to go first. You're the council's representative to the redevelopment commission.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Reporting back from our most recent meeting of the redevelopment commission. Some time ago, it was decided that the RDC would reimburse the private individual who was affronting the money and labor, et cetera, for the new theater, which will be a definite benefit to the citizens and all residents of our county. We were wondering how we would provide funding for that, and in our last meeting, Ben Merida passed out a sheet, and I have asked him to make it available to our council members tonight, showing exactly how it would be reimbursed, how we would come up with the funds without creating a tax increase for our residents. And I think you'll find it surprising that we were able to do so with funds on hand that would still leave us with some additional funds for further spending, which I'll address again in just a moment. After we pass this out, in case you have any questions, I'd like to forego then to Gary and Ben, who have dwelt in this a little deeper than than I have, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory as to what it shows on the paper. Ben, if you would like to address it further, break down.
Yeah. And so what I created for the RDC was a cash statement. This is pretty rough. It's not my finest looking work, but I just want to give them kind of a rough idea of what expenses we were aware of and the revenue sources that we have. Keep in mind, these revenue sources take into account Senate Bill One, which which does kind of make things challenging down the road, but as far as TIF revenue and things, it's not really a challenge. So they are able to purchase the building, absorb the soft costs. Also, they're they've taken on the project at the parking lot on Morgan Street, and even with all those, we expect them to have a surplus of about nine hundred thousand over the course of the year.
Phil, then the other piece of that comes from the, and we addressed that in the last report of orders waiting just two minutes ago, from the RDC bond that was in twenty twenty one, almost fourteen million dollars at that time. There is still money left in the downtown portion of that. That was broken into nine projects, and one of those projects was downtown, and there was money left in that, so that's funding it as well.
Okay. That's a good report. Any other questions or comments from Gary or Ben? Thank you. I had also expressed at our last meeting a concern I'm also having around the city at all of vacant parcels of ground that the city is either inheriting from the state after right of ways, or some we have been propositioned by the state, and we have bought those parcels outright. I've been a little concerned, the fact that it doesn't appear we're doing anything to develop those parcels in preparing for future expansion and growth. And as a result, down on South Ohio Street, behind the new gas station that opened up this past year, Northwest Avenue behind it, we have a development company that has purchased or optioned most of the homes on that street, and it's been going on now for about three years. But for lack of some cooperation, for obvious reasons, by the state of Indiana in getting a traffic cut coming off of that property onto Ohio Street, and if you go down and look at that property, you can understand the problems. A retention pond, stoplight already there that's not in alignment with the exit from Northwest, and the development company advised us this week that because of that, or lack of, they're dropping their proposal, and they had two or three, I felt outstanding businesses committed to go in that area, and one of them being a Chick-fil-A, which Gary and I were talking would provide about four million, four point two into our TIF fund to be used for further development. So I met with the developers, and they assured me that if there's any way possible, we can make it still work. They are still definitely interested in developing that area, so we're going to discuss it further at our next RDC meeting, and I'm hoping something positive can come out of that. So that brings you up to speed.
I'd like to comment on what Councilman Deckard said. The developer that has looked at the property there on South Ohio Street, we met with them three times. The first time they came in, they wanted a tax payment, and we made it kind of clear to them, no, we're not going to give a tax payment. If as a situation, we had two hundred acres to sell and we only had one buyer, well, then we've got to do some things to try to incentivize that project. We view our city isn't in that situation. We view we've got an acre to sell and two hundred people wanting to buy, so we didn't see any advantage of giving tax abatements. Met with them a second time, and Phil, I don't know if they told you this or not, and we mentioned about the lots that the state had bought that were going to come back to the city, and so we were willing to give them those properties and then cut in a four-way stop. Well, they came back later, and they wanted us to give them the parcels of ground that we bought from the state, which was no problem, but they also wanted us to put a cut in there with the four-way stop, which we said we would, and what was that, Gary? About three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that?
For a stoplight, yes.
But the big kick was when they said they also want the city to give two million dollars for this project, and we're not going to generate enough tax revenue through the TIF to justify a two million dollar give. And Councilman Deckard referred to the Chick-fil-A. We've asked him several times, you know, do you have that signed contract? And they never could produce that, so I'm aware of what they're wanting to do down there, and I just, you know, let you know where we stand. We've told them that we were not in favor of giving them two million dollars. So, but Councilman Deckard, thank you for your report. The next one, Councilwoman Miller was going to talk about the planning commission. She had given me copies of the minutes. If you just want to look at the minutes, you can go on the city's website and download those, so go wait and ask her to give a report the next month. Mr. Mayhem, you're the representative for the organic economic development. Is there anything that you would want to report?
The four bare feet campus is for sale with a new broker, Cushman and Wakefield. They're asking eleven million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand for that campus, and the Development Corporation is targeting life sciences and microelectronics for that property, which would be a good fit for it.
Good spot for it.
Yep. And that's. That's it for.
Okay. Well, thank you for both of you for reporting back, and again, we'll make sure we do this every month so we can keep a little better update from the council on what's going on. Mr. Coffey, under new business, we have the first reading on ordinance two thousand twenty five dash one nine zero two, amendment to zoning ordinance, chapter fifty eight, section three.
And we have with us tonight Rick Dernall from the Plan Commission. He's going to come up and explain what it is that the Plan Commission is asking the council to do in regards to the amendment to our current ordinance, which is the zoning ordinance for the city of Martinsville, chapter fifty eight, section three, and chapter nine and four, section one forty five.
Good evening. So several months ago, we had a petitioner before us for the Plan Commission, and it was brought to our attention, they felt that the costs for notifying public was a little, a little excessive. So we dove into what the requirements are for other plan commissions in our area, and we are, we were one of only a couple that still require a certified mailing. Many districts have went to a certificate of mailing, which is a lot more cost effective for our petitioners. I did not go to the post office, but on their website, if they were to get certified mail with a signature required and a green receipt slip, that total came to over thirteen dollars per mail, per piece. A certificate of mailing, per the USPS dot com, is two dollars and twenty cents per piece, and what that does is our petitioners go in with with their mail and with a list of the names and addresses where it's going, and the post office will stamp that as a certificate of mailing, and that is a guarantee that it goes into the postal service on that date. That is what the Morgan County Plan Commissioner requires, Johnson County Plan Commissioner, and parts of Hendrix and Monroe County are doing the same thing, so it's just a lot more cost effective. The changes in the ordinance, the two that Mr. Coffey referenced, they they simply changed the language from requiring certified mail to certificate of mailing. We also looked at it, and at the same time are dropping the requirement of the petitioner mailing to the Plan Commissioners directly. We feel like they're they're giving all the information to the building office. Lisa has been emailing us with plenty of time beforehand. That's going to satisfy that requirement, and the other thing is we just, we simply cleaned up some areas where it would say, well, this has to go to one office, and then in another spot, it was referencing another office. We just tried to make it uniform. Everything runs through the building department, so. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Again, as this ordinance is a first reading, no further action will be taken this evening. It will be on the agenda for July fourteenth meeting. Prior to tonight, you were sent out copies of the claims to review. Are there any comments or questions regarding the claims?
I do have a question. I think it's economic development, the flock. Can you explain that? Like, what the, you know, why is it, why is it codified in there and then maybe what is it? I just haven't seen that before.
Yeah, that's the six flock cameras. I think we got those about a year ago, and that's the renewal fee for those six cameras.
And why is it under, just because I don't understand, why is that under economic development?
It's under their contractual services. Since it was their new over the contract, that's why we paid it out of there.
Is it possible to get a copy of that actual contract?
Yeah.
For you?
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Somebody that has it. I'd like to look at that.
Yep. Holly. Team.
Phil's got a question.
Mayor, a question backing up to proposed ordinance nineteen oh two. In my understanding, that the property owner, now there's no way of ascertaining they were notified other than a mailing was sent to the post office.
Let's. Ask. Clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. The current process is that a petitioner comes in to the building department, and the building department provides a list of landowners and mailing addresses, and that's per the Morgan County Auditor's Office. They they look at the map and and generate who needs to be notified. Currently, they're required to send certified mail as well as sign an affidavit of mailing, which is just a attestation that they're, that they have complied with our requirements. One of the issues that we were repeatedly told is that certified mail, the delivery rate is not as high as people would think it would be. People aren't home to to take the mail, so the postman will leave a postcard, and the person's to go to the post office and pick it up. Well, the pickup rate is even worse. So we don't have any guarantee that the property owner. So we don't have any guarantee that the property owners are, in fact, getting it, and I believe that's why most of our surrounding districts have went to the, to the cheaper option.
The, the post office has never lost any of my mail. So, I mean, correct? So what's, what's the, you know, doesn't that create a situation where, you know, I was never told?
All the statute requires, it says that notice shall be sent to adjoining property owners. So that's all the statute requires. So I think this, in my opinion, is a better way to ensure that it actually was sent. Now, you know, again, I completely understand. I think all of us at times have had difficulty, probably more recently than in the past, with the United States Postal Service. But I think Mr. Dernall is correct. I can't tell you how many pieces of certified mail I get back at my office on a daily basis that is never claimed. It, you know, people just.
Does that, not to interrupt, is that creating legal jeopardy within your office to say?
No, no, because the courts, as long as you prove your senate, if they don't claim it and it comes back unclaimed, the courts see that as good service. The homeowners simply did not follow through with going to pick up their mail like they're supposed to, so the courts see that as good service.
So back on the claims, I entertain a motion to approve the claims. I'll move to accept the claims.
Second.
But a motion made, and second, to approve the claims as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Any comments from the council this evening? Any comments from the public? Couple announcements real quick before we adjourn. You each are receiving copies of the two thousand twenty-six budget this evening for your review in advance of the Saturday's two thousand twenty-six budget workshop. Workshop will start at eight o'clock here in the council chambers. It will be open to the public, however, no public comment will be received, and the council cannot make any final decisions regarding the budget during the workshop. All non-emergency city offices and services will be closed on July fourth for the Independence Day holiday. Additionally, the utility office and transfer station will be closed on Saturday, July fifth, in observance of the holiday. Those residents who normally have their trash picked up on Friday, it will be picked up on Monday, December. We also ask that you do not leave your trash curbside over the weekend. Also, a reminder, the Independence Day parade will be on Friday, July fourth, ten o'clock, starting at the John Harwood Middle School, and will come north on Sycamore to Washington, then over to Jefferson, and back down to the middle school. The next meeting of the common council will be on Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, seven o'clock here in the council chambers. We are adjourned.